Perfect. Okay, Baltimore City Council Budget Appropriations Committee. Year four, City Council Bill 20-0527, ordinance estimates for fiscal year June 30, 2021. I'm Eric Costello, Chair of the Committee. Can't hear me? How's that? Why am I hearing myself? Yeah. All right, let me try this. Hello? Almost said something inappropriately. Sharon, you kick it off.
Greetings, everyone. I'm going to start it off. The Chair of the Committee is having some technical difficulties and he's getting that together. But today, we have the Office of Children and Family Success. Oh, not yet. The Mayor's Office of Human Services. And we'll start.
Yes, go ahead. You can start.
Does that work now?
They have a slide that they're going to put up and do their presentation first for, I guess, about seven, 10 minutes. Okay, thank you. Ms. Keisha Edwards.
Good afternoon, Councilman Costello and Councilwoman Middleton and the other council members who are participating in the hearing via WebEx. My name is Keisha Edwards and I am the Acting Director for the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And before I begin my remarks, I want to make sure that I acknowledge my colleague who is here in the chambers with me. Maria is providing additional support to our agency. She is our content expert and has extensive experience in supporting the homeless community and our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. And so I just want to acknowledge her for her support during our transition of leadership at the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And I'd also like to acknowledge the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services staff who are also dialing into the WebEx. They have done an extraordinary job during COVID-19, and I'll talk more specifically about that. But I want to acknowledge their ability to be very nimble and responsive and a part of the larger, the city's larger effort to ensure that we were adequately serving our most vulnerable neighbors during the pandemic. Now, I'd like to go into the official presentation for this committee related to the budget. Next slide, please. So, the city, the city of Baltimore has about 2,500 individuals that experience homelessness in any given night. And so there is a real need to make sure that we have a very responsive agency that partners with many, many organizations to support the needs of our, those individuals that are experiencing homelessness. The core mission of our agency is to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring in Baltimore City. And that is a really audacious mission that we all take very seriously. And as I said, we have a committed staff who live and breathe this mission every single day. The focus of our work is to respond to the urgent housing crisis in Baltimore City and to support the city's heightened and urgent commitment to preventing and ending homelessness. Just as a means of background to kind of lay the framework for our budget hearing, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services was launched as a standalone agency in July 2019. This was very important to the city. Previously, Homeless Services was incorporated in the Mayor's Office of Human Services. This restructuring of the Mayor's Office of Human Services to create a standalone entity really speaks to our focus on homeless services and really, really making sure that we elevated the needs of the community in a really meaningful way. And so this was an, you know, a monumental kind of restructuring of city government in order, as I said, to meet a critical and urgent need. Currently, the office is going through a leadership transition. As I said, I have a dual role with my home agency, which is the Office of Children and Family Success, but I am also acting as the Acting Director for the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And I'm doing that with the support of an amazing team. I mentioned Maria, who we brought on as our content expert, who really has extensive knowledge working in the homeless services community. And we've also hired a Chief of Policy and Partnerships, Katie York, who has, who is an attorney but has worked in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services previously. So, we feel very good about the fact that we are laying a strong foundation for the agency and we are completely committed to maintaining our community partnerships, which are critical to the work that we do. I would just like to highlight that the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services has a guiding and governing body, an outside organization called the Continuum of Care. The Continuum of Care is made up of many community partners who help us to meet this critical need. Next slide. So, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services has a overall budget of about $63 million. As you can see from this slide, the majority of those dollars are federal dollars that come to us via HUD. And the majority of those dollars are sub-granted out to our many partners. And so in many ways, we provide grant management oversight and compliance to our partners. We do have a small but mighty team of employees who are, who operate out of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. But again, the lion's share of the budget for this agency does come through federal dollars. Next slide. So, Service Number 356 really relates to the overall administration of the agency. The administration cost is about $6.7 million. And we did, over this budget cycle, move some of our general funded positions to federal funding, which was in line with our Continuum of Care grant and aligned with accounting best practices. Next slide. The administration is really focused on its action plan that it created back in June 2019. The agency rolls out a three-year action plan. The focus is to increase affordable housing, improve the homelessness response system, transform emergency shelters, increase income and employment for the clients that we serve, and ensuring that we apply a racial equity lens across all of these strategies. And again, this is an action plan that was adopted in 2019, so we are still in the very early stages of implementing our action plan. But the agency and the staff is very committed to this plan. We, again, partner with many organizations across the city to execute the plan. And this slide, Slide 6, does give you specific strategies, specific actions within those key strategies that are driving our work associated with our action plan, which guides all of the work of the agency. Next slide. Service Number 893, which has a budget of close to $500,000, $496,000, $561, is really focused on homeless prevention. And as you can see from the performance measures that we have had in fiscal year 20, about 2,000, north of 2,000, close to 3,000 clients enrolled in our prevention services programming. And prevention services, homeless prevention includes financial assistance, legal providing, we've provided grants to organizations to provide legal services, financial counseling, and other services for those who are imminently at risk of eviction. Next slide, please. Some highlights related to homeless prevention. As I said, the services are all encompassing. Everything that we do is through a partnership model. We did use state funding in fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 to provide eviction prevention and rental assistance through partnerships with the Center for Urban Families and the Baltimore City CAP Centers. It is important to note that we are going to be really ramping up resources dedicated to homeless prevention. We intend to use our resources from the CARES Act across multiple agencies, DHCD, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and the Baltimore City CAP Centers to really execute a very robust, community-based strategy to significantly increase our engagement and support around rental assistance and eviction prevention. We consider homelessness prevention to be one of the number one strategies that we need to leverage and have a strong plan for post-COVID-19 because we expect that there's going to be an extraordinary need. And so we are already working across agencies to bring our federal and state funding together to really build out a robust infrastructure for meeting the, the post-COVID-19 demand. Next slide. Outreach Services, which is Service Number 894. Outreach Services are critical in our homeless services agency. As you can see, in fiscal year 20, we had about 2,800 contacts with individuals who were experiencing homelessness. And we have a really robust outreach team at MOHS, and we also partner with two other nonprofits in the city to help us with our outreach efforts. Next slide. So, in fiscal 20, we partner with People Encouraging People and Healthcare Access Maryland in addition to our own staff. And you can see that between the three of us, we had a lot of contact through the outreach programming. 23% of the person, of the individuals who exit from street outreach go to shelter transitional or permanent housing. It is important to note that COVID-19 was a real disruptor in our outreach services because of all of the concerns related to the public health pandemic. On March 12th, right around the time when, when COVID really became an important and prominent issue for our country, our team did go out and deliver hygiene kits, non-perishable food supplies, and hand washing stations. Because of concerns related to the safety of staff, the safety of those who are unsheltered, and the redirecting of resources within the agency did create a situation where we had to limit our outreach efforts. We have now received guidance from CDC, from the CDC and from HUD that I think has positioned us to resume outreach services. And we hope to have all of those things in place before the end of the month, but that was kind of one of the impacts of COVID-19. We currently have about 10 encampments across the city, and we do provide those encampments, water, hygiene kits, and PPE. Finally, I would just like to note that, again, the outreach team, because we had to suspend services in the community temporarily, the outreach team, the MOHS outreach team has been very busy working on supporting the hotels that we brought online to assist with our sheltering strategy. And they also have been deployed to the Try Support Center initiative at Lord Baltimore Hotel. Our hope is that we can get a new staff, contracted staff, to support the Lord Baltimore Hotel initiative, again, as we pull our outreach team out of that program and get them to refocus on issues within the community. Next slide. Service Number 895 is related to temporary housing. And this is really our sheltering strategy. And as I said, when we started the presentation, we know that about 2,500 individuals are homeless on any given night in Baltimore. So it's very important that we have a strong temporary housing strategy so that we can meet the demand and the needs of, of those individuals who are experiencing homelessness. Next slide. We are working very hard to transform our temporary housing strategy. During COVID, our number one priority was to decompress the congregate shelters. And we moved those individuals who experienced homelessness and who were staying in our shelters into hotels to address concerns related to mitigating the spread of the virus. We also initiated a partnership with the Baltimore City Health Department to assist us with testing and data sharing, really trying to make sure that we don't have any outbreaks in the homeless community has been very important to our staff. And we have worked very diligently with our partners here locally and our providers here locally, but also with HUD and guidance from the CDC. As we move forward, we are going to continue to make improvements in our nine city-funded shelters. We are focused on improved case management services, transportation, meals, staffing, and housing-focused performance measures. We understand that there's a lot of work that we need to do to move folks out of shelters and into housing, more permanent housing. Next slide. And that brings us to Service Number 896, which is related to our focus on permanent housing. We have about $32 million dedicated to permanent housing, and we have three specific strategies that we are using to increase permanent housing opportunities for individuals that have experienced homelessness. One is our Rapid Rehousing Program. We've currently moved about 75 families from being sheltered or homeless into stable housing. We also have a new program, the Assistance in Community Integration Services Medicaid Pilot Program. We're very proud of this. This is a partnership with 10 hospitals across the city and healthcare for the homeless, where we have created a fund and where we use Housing Authority vouchers with a goal to place 200 families in permanent housing. And we have, have been successful at placing 123 families to date, and we're still making, you know, efforts to get to that 200 family goal. And then we are in the process of launching Bill for Zero. This is a partnership that's in the planning phase with partners, Community Solutions, Kaiser Permanence, A United Way, and our agency is a coordinating agency. And here, we have a commitment to rehouse 150 vulnerable homeless individuals who are 62 or older. And so that is a new partnership that we're bringing together where we're identifying resources to expand our permanent housing opportunities. And then finally, I would just like to end giving the council and the public a sense of the work that we have been doing in support of the pandemic. As I said at the beginning of the presentation, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services has just done an extraordinary job of being nimble and being responsive to the homeless community. We've worked hard at our own city-funded emergency shelters to get adequate testing in place and where appropriate to move individuals into hotels. We are also supporting non-city-funded shelters. We have quite a few non-city-funded shelters in the city, and we are providing them technical assistance and, and testing when needed. We have four hotels online when you include the Lord Baltimore, which has really been important to our non-congregate strategy. Those four hotels equal 700 beds in our city. As you can see, we've done universal testing. We had a partnership with Hopkins to make sure that we had adequate testing in the homeless community so that we could take proper care of those vulnerable individuals. We've talked about our commitment to increasing permanent housing availability. Transforming shelters is very important to us so that once the pandemic passes and we do have to reopen our shelters, we do want to make sure that they are high-quality experiences and that they are, the shelters are in better position to address health concerns. And as I said, this month, we will resume our street outreach efforts. So that's the presentation from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Edwards, for your presentation. Homelessness is such an important subject matter for the city. This particular office has just been going through changes year after year after year. And I, through your presentation, I see that there are some key goals, objectives, missions. I noticed, though, that there was one, there's a place in my district that was, KIP is temporarily being used, which was kind of an emergency situation of a homeless shelter in East Baltimore that you had to quickly separate over 160 men. And surprisingly, they use KIP. And of course, no one, no council member wants a homeless shelter in their district. And when that happened, it gave me a chance to really read and investigate and just really delve into homelessness. And of course, the people in the surrounding community settled down. The city just really met with the leaders and talked with them. And that temporary place is, I'm just, I'm thankful that we are helping people because people forget that people that are homeless are human beings as well. And I, for a while, was experiencing, really, it was just a shock, the negativity that they get from just surrounding people. And it's, again, this pandemic has really been an awakening on, on a lot of things, and homelessness has been one of them. I know that it's a temporary place there, and I, it helped me realize why there's so many homeless people just congregating in the downtown area. And so I'm very sympathetic to the council members, particularly of the, I'd say, the 11th, 12th, and 13th districts, because that's, if you, if you, if our council members get a chance to look at that map, you can see where all the shelters are. And I think after this pandemic, homelessness is going to, you know, we're going to, it's going to be worse. And so I'm saying that to all of the other council members on, on the council. You're, you're going to really experience what's happening around the whole city because it's going, it is affecting your district. So please be aware of this and just kind of study it. And the main thing that I dealt with when it, when this facility quickly moved to, to help these people from getting that virus was just trying to calm neighbors down and having them be sympathetic and understand why these people are homeless, because it could happen to any of us.
Absolutely.
And so it, I just wanted to kind of throw that piece out there as we move forward. So on that note, if there's any council members that have any questions, please recognize yourself. I'm trying to pull up the list, who we can start with. I'll just go down the list. I'll, I'll go down the list again, and we'll start with Councilman Henry.
Thank you. Trying to make sure that I'm coming through on a headset for the first time. Is this, is this working? Okay, great. So it's good. This is funny. I can look at you here, or I can look at you here. Okay. Good afternoon. I, I, I want to thank you and your team for the incredible work that they've been doing, which has gotten even harder with the pandemic. I, I'm sure I speak for all of my colleagues when I say we appreciate you and all you do. I have just two questions, one of which is kind of finicky and the other one's more high concept. I was looking at the Service 894, which is Outreach to the Homeless, and I was just curious. I noticed under performance measures that the target for this coming year of 3,000 street outreach contacts is actually lower than the actual from FY19. And I was, but the percentage is higher. And so I'm, the percentage of persons engaged through the street, I was wondering if you could just speak to that for a minute.
Thank you, Councilman Henry, for asking that question. That's very important to note that the performance measures that are currently in our budget book were all pre-COVID.
Okay.
And so the good news was, pre-COVID, we had seen a decrease in encampments across the city. Our team had done a great job of responding to the homeless situation in Baltimore. Now, we are in a pandemic, and I, and I think things are just going to change dramatically. So we expect to have more contact, as Councilman Middleton appropriately raised. So we are trying to make sure that we have resources dedicated to meet that new need. So that's the discrepancy that we need there.
Okay. That, that makes sense. And, and then the more high concept, this is really kind of weird. I can't, I, I'm, I'm.
It is weird.
Yeah, okay. You know what? You know, for the viewers at home, I'm just going to turn this way and look at you, because she's really here in real life in this direction. So here, here's my question. We understand that the budget is a huge collection of trade-offs and that the resources you have are the resources that you have, and you're doing the best you can do. My question is, if you had a few more resources, where would you want to start concentrating?
Can I get to you?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
So thank you for asking that question, Councilman Henry. You're right, the resources we have are the resources we have. But I want to first start with the good news. The good news is that homeless services is one of the priorities of the federal government. So as you saw in our initial slide, the majority of our budget is already federally funded. We're going to receive We're going to receive a considerable influx of federal dollars to meet the growing need. Now, that doesn't all come to homeless services. And actually, about 80% of that gets re-granted out to the community. So it will not, it will not, in most cases, directly grow the capacity of the agency, but it will grow the capacity of the community to be a partner. To your specific question about if resources were not a constraint, where would we focus? I think the number one thing we are continuing to struggle with is permanent housing. And so we are continuing to work with our partners, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, which has the, the housing vouchers, which are going to be critical to a permanent housing strategy. And so, you know, we have about $32 million dedicated to permanent housing, but we have many people who are in shelters or who are in transit, receiving transitional services that we wish that we had more availability to bring them out of shelters and into permanent housing. So I think the number one thing, which is probably the most expensive thing to really change homelessness in our city, is just more affordable housing and a stronger permanent housing strategy. So that's the first thing. The second thing, to Councilwoman Middleton's point, that we are heavily investing in, is rental assistance and eviction prevention. We need to make sure that the families who are on, who are on that line, right? Who are one paycheck away from experiencing homelessness, we need to have a safety net for them. DHCD is the lead partner for developing our eviction prevention strategy. We are a partner for that, and so are the cap centers. But I think we want to stop the tide, we want to stop the pipeline. And I think the, the best way that we as a city can invest, because once people walk through that door to homelessness, it's twice as expensive and it's twice as hard to bring them back to, to housing stability. So the, whatever investment we can make in rental assistance and eviction prevention, not only for COVID-19, but long-term, because we've never really fully invested in that as a strategy for those working families who are one paycheck away. I think that's an area where we could stop the, you know, the growing need. And again, providing all of those support services around substance abuse, mental health. So I think if we could figure out how to do better on the support services, if we could have a real strong strategy for affordable housing. Again, that's not all done by homeless services. DHCD is our partner on the affordable housing strategy. And then just making sure we have a robust prevention model. I think those three things together, Councilman Henry, would position us so that at least the need would grow, right? That we could stop the tide, and we could focus on those individuals who are, who are experiencing persistent homelessness, and make sure that those folks who are at risk, that we do everything that we can to keep them in their homes. Because once they go into homelessness, it's, it's double the investment to bring them back to, to housing security. So that would be my recommendation. You're welcome.
Now we'll go to Councilwoman McCray. Do you have a question?
My questions were actually answered. Thank you.
Okay. And now we'll move to, it's Councilman Burnett. Are you on?
I'm on, but, I'm on, but I don't have any questions. Everything was covered in the presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Middleton.
You're welcome.
I, I first want to say thank you to Ms. Edwards. I see her operating in so many aspects of local government, especially during this COVID-19, that I don't know where the city would be without you. So thank you. My first question is, I know you said that there are 2,500 individuals who are homeless at any particular time in the city. What was that number for, for the past two years?
It's remained about steady, Councilman Pinkett. It's, it's, for the past 2019 to 2020, even back to 2018, it's gone somewhere between 2,000 to 2,500. So that's been the kind of the recurring number that we've been struggling with over the past two to three years.
Okay. And for Service 896, the slide mentioned, I think, three different activities servicing about 425 individuals. Are there more than that 425 that are serviced out of that particular activity?
Yes, sir. Thank you for asking that question. One of the biggest challenges with our office, Councilman Pinkett, is remember I said that about 80% of our dollars go out to other nonprofits. So the data that we capture are for those individuals that use the city's data system. So we have a lot of providers who are providing services to individuals who are experiencing homelessness that we don't have the authority to collect all of their data. They have an outside data collection model. One of the things our agency is working very hard on is to bring those organizations, those small nonprofits, into our data management system so that we can better demonstrate, show, and have more transparency around the full breadth of services that we provide. But one of the limitations in that slide is that this only speaks to the MOHS staff, not all of the resources that are out in the community.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that is, thank you for that clarification. And, and so my last point is not really a question, but a statement. A statement, and I almost hate to say this, but I'm, I'm wondering, and this isn't just for the city of Baltimore, but nationally, are we really committed to ending homelessness? And the, the, the reason I say that is because even in this discussions today, we're talking about a $63 million allocation for homelessness. And from your testimony, there are 2,500 individuals who are experiencing homelessness at any given point. That's $25,000 per person, $2,000 per month, per person. We live, if, if we were really going to commit $63 million to homelessness, if we could end homelessness tomorrow with 63 million, we're giving each individual $2,000 a month to, to find homes. I, I'm not certain, and I know it's not that simple, but either we need to reimagine how we attack this problem, or we need to get serious about it. Because I, I just think it's a lack of vision about how we address homelessness. Because I think that we're spending the money, I'm just not confident where the money is going. And that's not about Baltimore, but it seems like nationally, we, we are more interested in maintaining homelessness than curing it. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, do you have a comment to his comment?
So, so I would just say to Councilman Pinkett, I can always count on you to create the call of the action for us to be better, bolder, and more courageous. And I appreciate that. I think that you're right, there's always more that we can do, Councilman Pinkett. But what I will say is two things. We have a very strong Continuum of Care Board in Baltimore that is very committed to supporting this strategy, holding the city accountable. Many, we have youth on that board, we have individuals who have lived experiences related to being homeless, and so they, they hold our feet to the fire. I think it goes, your question goes back to the same question that Councilman Henry asked, which is, what will it take? It will take more supportive services. Many, many folks who experience homelessness have really, are challenged with substance abuse, with mental health issues. And so we've got to make sure we have a very strong supportive services model. And it will take a permanent housing strategy. We have to figure out how to fund making housing more affordable. And you're right, the money we spend on the service delivery model, we should be thinking about, how do we put more money into hands of vulnerable communities so that they can pay for their own housing? And that is why the third option of rental assistance and eviction prevention is so important. Because if we don't want this issue to grow, we need to get serious about helping those working families who are on the fringe. So I, I appreciate everything you've said. I think you're right in, in, in many cases. But you have a committed staff in the mayor's office of homeless services, and it has been a pleasure to work with them because they too are asking the same questions that you are asking, which is, how do we end homelessness? So, so we do have the right people around the table, but we probably need to do, as you said, some reimagining, not only locally, but nationally. And I appreciate you always pushing us to, to, to be creative, be courageous, and be bold, Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you. And now I see Councilman Dorsey's, your hand is up. Councilman Dorsey, are you there?
Thank you, Vice President Middleton. Yes, thank you. I'm not a member of the committee, so I wanted to make sure that time was deferred to all the members of the committee before it came to me.
And I have a question, if.
Okay, well, we'll yield to Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you.
Ms. Edwards, are there any groups, when you say, that we are actually working in, that are doing a good job, that we consider like the top? Who should be getting more funds? If you say, like, mental health, who's doing a good job? And mental health, who's doing a good job? And substance abuse, instead of having so, having the money be spread out and some of these organizations not doing a good job? Do we know off the, do we know offhand who's doing a good job? And how are they evaluated?
So thank you for asking that question, Councilwoman Snead. The first question that you raised about providers and the quality of providers, I think that's one of the benefits of the continuum of care, is that we have community partners standing side by side with us to really make sure that we are executing our programming at a high quality of care. And just as an example, Councilwoman Snead, previously, we had a, an independent provider at the Pender Hughes Shelter. Recently, we defunded that provider because they were not providing quality services. Currently, the mayor's office of homeless services is having to operate the Pender Hughes Shelter. We have put an RFP out on the street to hopefully get a third-party provider and that can deliver the level of quality that our community and that our homeless neighbors deserve. So we do have a very robust evaluation process. Folks are required to submit data around their effectiveness. HUD is at the table with us, and they closely monitor. As I said, the majority of our funding comes from HUD. So they are very aware of what our strengths and weaknesses are. We also have had a strong partnership with St. Vincent de Paul. That's also one of our, our partners who, who's doing great work. So we have some great providers. I think the real challenge, Councilwoman Snead, is capacity. We need more great providers. And so how do we cultivate, how do we cultivate capacity in our community so that we can extend offerings? Another example is, we don't have enough service providers for youth who are experiencing homelessness. That's a real challenge for Baltimore. We just put an RFP out on the streets for $3 million with HUD dollars, but we did not get the diversity of providers that we had hoped for. So we're going to rebid that RFP. And so I think the work of the mayor's office of homeless services is to, to work with partners to cultivate new providers with the expertise that we need in our city. And that is a challenge, and it is something that we're working on.
Thank you. Are you finished with your questioning, Councilwoman Snead?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So Councilman Dorsey, we'll go ahead back to you.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton. Tisha, hi, how are you doing today? Thank you for your presentation, thank you for being able to answer all these questions. I have a bunch of questions. I did, I've worked on some legislation over the last couple of years with Homeless Persons Representation Project and the Public Justice Center, and they've been great partners, and I think they're great advocates for the homeless population in Baltimore City. And I just really value their input in so many different ways. So first, the first question I wanted to ask is, do we know how much reimbursement for non-congregate housing we will be receiving from FEMA?
I'm going to defer to Daniel Ramos out of Finance. They are the lead on the reimbursement strategy.
Hello. In terms of the FEMA reimbursement, unfortunately, the, the rules are still being drafted by the Treasury and DHS. We know that we have received $6 billion in ESG funding specific to MOHS. I believe a portion of that will have to be re-granted out to our community partners. We brought in a consultant to do this kind of full-time, to bring on the expertise that we need. And we will be submitting for FEMA reimbursement as soon as the portal opens, but it has not yet. The answer is, we don't know yet.
So we don't know, but my understanding is that the FEMA obligation is 75% of the total expenditure.
That, that is how the rules are current, are, is currently written. We know that there's a lot of momentum from local jurisdictions to push FEMA for 100% reimbursement. But we also think that there's going to be some flexibility in the rules about whether we're allowed to use things like in-kind services as part of our match, as well as a portion of the $103 million of CARES Act funding as our match. So again, there's just a lot, the, the money came out much sooner than the rules were written. So we, we feel like we have the right expertise on board to help us navigate it. But the, the answer is that the federal government doesn't know how much we will be receiving in, in FEMA reimbursement, at what rate, and at what, what the timeframe is.
And so is there any, is there any way we find ourselves in a position where we end up footing the bill for more than 25% of, you know, the reimbursable expenditures?
I don't believe so. But I just want to, I just want to make clear that, you know, we work hand in hand with, with Director Edwards' team on, on the strategy around homelessness. The Department of Finance isn't holding up anything. What we've been struggling with is the capacity. When we were looking for hotels, the issue was not funding. The issue was finding hotels that were willing to accept possibly COVID-infected people.
I see. Okay. So that's my first question. We're getting how much in ESG funds?
A million, but I'm not 100% sure what the split is. That's going to have to go out to our Continuum of Care grants.
Sorry, you were not, you were muted when you first began speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes, we received $6 million in ESG funding. I'm not 100% sure what the percentage is going to be that we're going to have to re-grant out.
And I would just like to add, Councilman Dorsey, we are expecting a second allocation of ESG dollars. We don't know how much, and we don't know when, but we expect that there will be additional dollars coming to the city to support this need.
I'd like to know what we know about that because I was told that we are receiving 15.6 million. I believe that another 9.1 million was awarded today. Can we confirm that?
I can't confirm it, but I can try to follow up with you. I'll, I'll check in with our HUD representatives. I have not received an award letter today. But I can follow up with you, Councilman Dorsey, to get, if we have a more up-to-date response in the next 24 hours.
Do we, so I assume that even if we haven't been awarded, it sounds like we're anticipating being awarded. Do we have a plan for how we're going to spend that? Do we, do we know how we're spending potentially a total of 15 and a half million dollars in these ESG funds, and how are they restricted, I guess?
So again, let's, we don't know all of the restrictions yet because the regulations are still being written. But there are three priorities, and they relate back to the priorities that I commit, that I communicated to Councilman Henry. First, rental assistance and eviction prevention. First, rental assistance and eviction prevention. So we will make sure that a considerable amount of resources that we receive, more probably through the second allocation, will be bundled and braided with DHCD CSBG dollars. So rental assistance is a priority. The hoteling strategy is a priority. We have put a lot of resources into bringing folks out of shelters and making sure that they were safe during COVID. So that is an expense that we need to plan for, and we don't know the timeline at this point. It may be several months before we can move folks into other types of housing options. The third thing that we're working on is how do we partner with other folks for more permanent housing? Again, I don't have a budget for it. We have that Built to Zero team that I've talked about. So that is something that we are, are, we think is very important. And then the final priority is that we have an obligation to our partner providers. They have also outlaid, um, funding to meet the need. And our HUD requirements require us to share in some of those dollars with our providers. So those are the four areas that we will be working on. And all of those areas are very expensive and will exceed our allocation. So even with $15 million, when you think about those four priorities, our resources, it will be more, but it won't be enough. So, uh, those are the priorities, but when we get more details about the regulation, we can definitely come back to you, Councilman Dorsey, and talk more specifically about how we're using those resources. But those are the four things that we're thinking through right now.
Okay, yeah. I just, I guess I believe that the hotels are what FEMA should be paying for. But I guess it sounds like the issue isn't how are we going to pay for them? But who is, where the capacity for hotel rooms are? Is, was there any, I don't recall there being any sort of executive order or anything like that telling hotels that they've got to take people?
There was not an executive order, and I, and I, I can't speak to the Mayor's authority to do that private business.
No, I do know, we just finished with, uh, the Convention Center and Visit Baltimore, and there is one hotel that volunteered for, um, help. And I think that was the Lord Baltimore Hotel.
Correct. We have four hotels now, and we are, we are sourcing a fifth as we speak. So we expect that we're going to bring another hotel online. But it is a negotiation process with the, uh, private owners of those facilities. And now that the city is beginning to open, they're going to be less resistant to do business with us from this particular community.
So Councilman Dorsey, um, just, um, I know you sound like you have several questions, but I just want you to be mindful that at 1:30, we have scheduled the Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions and the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals right after that. So we, we're trying our best to stay on schedule. So if you could, um, I guess, combine some of your questions that are together.
Sure. I'll, I'll ask one last question, and then I'll leave another one on the table to, uh, to request a written response as soon as we can get it.
Okay, sure.
The last question that I, that I want to ask and see if we can answer this is, by essentially every count that I have heard, that 2,500 number is low. That, um, I think double counts some people and undercounts youth in particular. So that number, I, I think most anybody working in this field thinks that that number is actually low. I've never heard a number below 3,000 before. Is understanding that number accurately part of our strategy? And part of how we consider funding to be adequate for whether or not it's adequate to, to achieve the goals of the Office of Homeless Services? And what happens, what's, what is the ramification of undercounting versus counting more accurately?
Councilman Dorsey, I appreciate you asking that question. First of all, the way that every city in this country gets their homeless, uh, their homeless count is through what we call a point-in-time process that is managed through a HUD kind of methodology. It is not a perfect number, and I agree with you 100% that you are probably right, that young people are doing a lot of couch surfing and they don't self-identify as homeless. And so I, I agree with you that they're, in this type of environment with this, with vulnerable populations, you always run the risk of undercounting. So you are correct. In terms of additional funding, uh, of course, uh, we would love to have more funding around those priorities that I have explained to you and, and other council folks who have real concerns about making sure we have adequate resources to address this need. However, I would just reiterate that what we need to do is make sure that we're efficient and effective with the resources we have. And so making sure that we're thoughtful, the questions you've asked about what are we using CARES dollars for? How do we push as much money to FEMA as possible? And really having a strong leveraging strategy for our local dollars, our state dollars, and our federal dollars is really important. And I think the first step towards that is the consultant that finance has brought to the table so that we're not making it up, so that we're not competing for resources across agencies, and so that we can get the resources where there is the greatest need. So I know that's an imperfect response, Councilman.
I appreciate it.
But I think it's, it's the best that we can do under the circumstance.
Well, my only comment on that is that, you know, I, I feel, I, I feel like this is very similar to how I view education funding. When the state denies the city, it's the state's share that they're supposed to be put up. My answer is never, oh, well, it's, I guess the city has to put up more. And I guess if our funding from the federal or state level is contingent on the count, if they're only going to fund based on a count of 2,500, and we really believe that our count is probably more accurately 3,000, what can we, should we do, you know, or should we be doing to increase our local funding in order to account for the undercounting? I, it's just a comment.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Um, my last, the question that I want to leave with and ask for some sort of written response on is what are the parameters around which we engage in rapid rehousing? I heard you mention rapid rehousing, but I'd like to know what our actual programmatic criteria is around that. If somebody could send me a doc, a policy document on that, I would be very appreciative. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, man, Vice Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other members that have a last question before we close out and move on? Thank you so much, Ms. Edwards and your team, for, um, the wonderful things that you can continue to do in, uh, helping the quality of life for our city. And, um, on that note, we'll, uh, hold a minute so we can transition to the Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions.
If anybody's still listening, uh, I did just get a notice that, uh, we did get 9.1 million allocated today. HUD's got it posted on their website, so that's really great.
Thank you. Thank you for that update.